Good evening. I'd like to call the order this March meeting of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. And to begin the meeting, we'll just go around and introduce ourselves. And if you'd like to share with us a book you're reading, please feel free to do so. Kari, I'm going to start with you.
My name is Kari Essery, and for the life of me, I can't remember the title. So there you go.
I'm Marilyn Wood, and I'm reading the book by Charlotte Zitlow, Minister's Daughter, One Life, Many Lives.
I'm Chris Harrison, and I read, I got interested in a book, some art history or art mysteries books that are middle grades books. And so I read one and liked it, so I'm reading the second one, which is, actually, I think it's the first one. I read the second one first. It's called The Van Gogh Deception.
I'm Jamie Burkhart, and I'm listening to Children of Virtue and Vengeance. I started it over break last week because I like to listen to audiobooks when I clean.
I'm Kathy Loser, and I'm actually reading a cookbook. It's titled How Not to Die.
Sounds like a good plan for a cookbook.
It is a very good cookbook.
All right, so we'll begin this evening with our first item, which is the Consent Agenda items. We will be looking, approving the revised minutes of the January 19th Board meeting, the minutes of the February 16th Board meeting, minutes of the March 3rd Board meeting, executive session, minutes of the March 8th special meeting, the monthly financial reports, the monthly bills, personnel reports, and the 2022 Board meeting calendar. Do we have a motion to approve these items?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the Consent Agenda items, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we will turn to Marilyn for the Director's Monthly Report and the review of the 2020, 2021 ISL Annual Report.
So I'm going to start with the annual report. So this one, and look back, and then we'll talk about now and looking forward. So the 2021 report, it's long, it's 71 pages long, but that's typical of four state library reports. And the, the copy that we gave you has both a comparison of 2020 and 2021. And we do that each year, and typically, that's quite useful to really understand the changes in services or the, the demand for services, so to speak. But since both 2020 and 2021 were pandemic years, it may not be quite as useful. But it's still, it was still valuable because we could begin to see that the, the numbers were trending upward. And so we're happy to know that. And overall, you can see that we were open about twice the number of hours in 2021 that we were in 2020. The revenue was formulaic, so it did raise at about the rate that we would anticipate. And our spending was nearly the same, our staffing was the same. So overall, use is slightly up from 2020, and obviously, it's still down quite a bit from 2019. So, but we do see encouraging signs. And I would say that probably some of the primary ones are those that people are very interested in a desire to resume programming at, in the library and other places. So we'll continue to report on that as time goes forward. Do you have any questions looking back? Okay, so let's look forward. So the Fe-, or the February report, I guess, is still looking back a bit, but it's up to date as well. So it's that time of year, people are beginning to think about their gardens, and the seed swap, as well as our seed library, are very popular right now. And Maggie Hutt is now leading that initiative and reporting that things are going well. The Power of Words and the exhibit Our Voice, celebrating the Coretta Scott King Illustrator Awards, were both in February. And in fact, the exhibit just closed on Sunday. So during that time, classes from Templeton, classes from the Project School visited, and it was depending upon the school, third, fourth, or fifth graders. And they learned about the award, about the achievements of Black authors and illustrators. And even the Project School created a paper-based quilt that was based on the short poem by Langston Hughes, Beautiful Blackbird and My People. That quilt hung in our gallery, so it was on the entrance to the exhibit. It was beautiful. They did, they did a great job. And also, students from the Academy of Science and Entrepreneurship visited each site, each Friday, and they were given a tour by our teen staff. And this, or those visits were really a culmination of the work of Jen Hoffman and Sam Ott, who did school-wide book club readings at, at, and they synced it with the exhibit, and the feature author was Jacqueline Woodson.
Any questions about the Director's Report?
Well, thank you, Marilyn.
You're welcome.
All right, our next item is some old business, which is an update for, for our Southwest Branch, and that will be Greer Carson.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So, foundation walls are just about ready to start going up. If you drive by the site, you'll see the framing for them. We were out there a couple of weeks ago, and it's just exciting to see something vertical for the first time. The driving and parking area are well-defined. You can now get a good sense for how the drive and the parking lot and the entrance to the garage are actually going to flow. We've placed some orders on teaching kitchen appliances, and we are tonight presenting a draft RFP, or a pair of them, for opening day collection services for the Southwest Branch collections, with Stephanie Meyer will speak to a bit more here in a second. Marilyn and I participated in an interview with WTIU a couple of weeks ago, which should air next week, we hear, so that'll be exciting. And we have a quick time lapse to date video we'd like to show you all. So yeah, it's very short. So imagine what that'll look like when this is all finished. We'll have it, it's sort of encapsulated from beginning to end. You can watch the whole thing, I don't know what, five minutes, whatever it winds up being, but it's really great to see. It's very exciting. So it really is kind of the perfect site for our third MCL library, and we're reminded of that every time we go out there. But of course, perfection can be costly. So, let's talk about change order for tonight. Last month, we introduced to you all the-
It is an action item, we need a-
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
So, do I have a motion to approve a change order in regards to the building of the Southwest, Southwest Branch?
So moved.
Okay. All right. So now we can go to Greer for discussion.
Okay, excellent. So last month, we kind of introduced the idea that we would be talking about a significant change order with regard to rock excavation, and tonight, we want to share some details and provide a little bit of context for that. So back when the site was selected, we knew we'd have to plan for rock excavation, and it's karst topography after all, so this is just part of, of building in our area. We enlisted Alton Witzig Engineering to conduct a thorough subsurface investigation and geotechnical report. The test borings done at the site and the subsequent subsurface report suggested an unsurprising amount of rock likely to be beneath the surface. This was enough for us to build a $49,000 allowance into our estimated construction cost to cover approximately 200 cubic yards of rock removal, which seemed reasonable based on the results. But the test results are never a guarantee as to how much rock you're going to find beneath the surface. And so as can happen in karst-heavy areas such as ours, it turns out there was quite a bit more than we anticipated. In some cases, the rock was found where it didn't appear to be dense in the borings themselves, and in other cases, it was more widespread and more shallow than we expected. So the actual rock removal was 1,389 yard, cubic yards, for a total of $342,510. After our $49,000 allowance, that's a $293,510 cost for rock removal. So there are two important questions we've been asking ourselves. Number one, how can or does this happen? When a thorough boring and subsurface report suggests that there won't be as much rock beneath the surface, well, this kind of gets into the nature of doing construction in a karst topography kind of area. So if you look at page 168 in the packet, there's a useful and pretty simple visual that shows how test borings are really just approximations as to rocks' density and therefore not wholly accurate indicators. Number two, what could we have done differently to avoid this scenario? Well, there are a couple of things maybe we could have done. Number one, we could have asked for additional test borings following the original Alton Witzig report, but that report showed no real indication that that would be warranted, and so at the time, I think that would have been unreasonable. Number two, we could have requested what's known as unclassified bids for the soil excavation as part of our final RFP for construction. This is where you would effectively tell bidders that anything you find under the soil is your cost, not ours. And some larger entities, including folks like IU who do this kind of construction, will do that because they can afford to have higher bids come in. That was unrealistic for us, given our construction budget. So how will this impact the overall construction budget? If you look at page 13 of the packet, you'll see that we are actually in a strong position to absorb this increased cost in rock excavation. If you look at the column titled Total Contract and Project Allocation Costs with Changes on the bottom portion of that spreadsheet, we currently have a $497,987 projected surplus. We have this in part due to the 2021 operating surplus, and in part due to the reduced bond issuance costs and increased proceeds from the actual bond sale. So the branch construction surplus amount already accounts for that additional $293,510, which means that 497 number is our actual current project surplus. In other words, we can handle this cost, however unfortunate it is. But maybe a better question is, what will we do if we encounter additional costs? In terms of excavation, the heavy lifting has already been done. All that remains really is shallow digging specific to utility lines, so it is highly unlikely we're going to run into anything like this again in terms of excavation costs. But there are soft costs, and this would be furniture, equipment, IT, infrastructure, collections, and shelving, for which we have estimates right now in our budget. And of course, we're going through perpetual supply chain disruption, so it's very possible, maybe even likely, that we're going to see an increase in those costs. If we find ourselves depleting the existing project surplus, we do have options for scaling back on some of those soft costs, but we do not anticipate anything on this scale specific to this change order. In other words, our project surplus should continue to cover unexpected costs. So we're happy to answer any questions, of course, and our friends Christine Matthew and Chris Floyd from Matthew Architects, as well as Ryan Strausser from Strausser Construction, and Bill Riggert from Bledsoe, Riggert, Cooper, James are here to provide any additional information you'd like.
I do have a question. So as I was looking through the packet, and it's hard to tell scale, right, but I'm assuming, I mean, some of these are very large. Is it possible that we could use those and repurpose those for natural seeding areas on the property?
That's a good question. What thoughts do we have?
At this point, basically, all of the large, large rocks have been removed.
Okay.
What happened to the rocks?
What happened to it? Basically-
You grind them down?
What's that?
Do you grind them down, or what do you do?
Hammer them and piece them, dig like to a size that can be handled, and then they're taken, hauled offsite and used for clean fill.
What makes it so expensive to extract rock out of the ground?
Ryan, can you-
Yeah.
I'm not questioning the price, I'm just wondering why it's so-
No problem.
This is Ryan Strausser.
Yep, Ryan Strausser, Strausser Construction. Yeah, rock removal kind of in this area, I guess when you think about digging, think of a excavator, backhoe, something like that with a bucket on it, that basically you can scoop, come through, production, turn, put it in a truck. Rock, you try to excavate the bucket, it basically is just going to hit it and just do nothing. So then, at that point, you have to hook a hammer up, a big hydraulic hammer, to the equipment, and you sit there and just kind of painstakingly chip on the rock until it fractures off in pieces that are manageable to then load and haul offsite.
And so we kind of dug a walkout basement at the one, I guess that's the west end of the property?
Correct.
Where, just out of curiosity, where were the, the big bad rocks?
Yeah, so if you go to the southwest corner, kind of down, down in the southwest corner is where the rock was the highest.
Okay.
And then it sloped down towards the north, where you can kind of see that one form panel for concrete walls about right there, is sloped down there. And then imagine it kind of shelving back towards where walkout basement kind of is. So it then stays kind of in line with that grade plane as it comes downhill. So your deepest, as you went into the bank, that is where you found the deepest, but specifically, it got deeper as you went into the southwest corner.
Did you find any caves in the rocks?
No caves, and that's what it just kind of, as you find, there'll be little fissures with water, natural, it's just, it's all kind of an unforeseen thing. It's a mix in there, so, but yeah, it was basically, you got down to rock, and as the picture showed, once you're in it, you're in it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does this make any problems with like potential sinkholes or anything developing in this area, or-
No, as we excavated the rock and got to the bottom of the excavation, we had Patriot Engineering, who's a third-party engineering company, they were on-site to evaluate the bottom of the excavation. They had us in a couple places where there were some little fissures between the rock, stabilized with cast-in-place concrete to basically solidify that, and they evaluated all of the subsurface conditions before foundation work started to proceed off of the bottom of excavation point.
So it won't be like the Corvette Museum in Kentucky?
Yeah. There is no, there is no sinkholes or anything like that we found or Patriot found when we got to the bottom of the excavation.
Are there any further questions from the board regarding the change order? All in favor of approving the change order, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Okay. Next, under New Business, we have a request for proposal for opening day collection services for the Southwest Branch, so talking about buying materials, that sounds exciting. So, and we have Stephanie Meyer and Greer, were you part of that too also?
We were one of those.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Stephanie Meyer, the manager of Access and Content Services, and it's my pleasure to share more information about an opening day collection service and why this is the path that we'd like to take for the creation of the Southwest Branch Collection. So an opening day collection service encompasses nearly every aspect of the selection, cataloging, and processing steps for ordering, receiving, or ordering and receiving materials. Vendors providing the service also store and deliver the items in one batch when everything is ready. This type of collection building differs from our standard purchasing in three major ways. So first, it's a larger amount of items purchased in a much shorter amount of time. We outsource all of the cataloging, labeling, and processing of those items, and we require that all the items purchased are then stored and shipped to us in a batch when everything is ready. Building a collection from scratch requires a different approach for, to the selection of materials, so the vendors that we choose will be building item lists, or carts, as they call them, that our selectors will then review and approve for each sub-collection, like fiction, nonfiction, children's books, et cetera. Our selector librarians will have the final say on approving or rejecting the items in all of the carts, and once those carts are approved, the vendors begin the next step of cataloging and processing all of the items. Cataloging the items entails creating a mark record for every item that adheres with our local cataloging standards, which creates our searchable online catalog, and then matching that online mark record with each physical item via a barcode. We receive the mark records from the vendor either as the orders are completed or once we're invoiced. Processing the items means that the vendor will ensure every item has things like a barcode, an RFID tag for checkout and security, a spine label, again, adhering to all of our local standards and practices, a book jacket when appropriate, an MCL property stamps, things like that. There is a very detailed report that's completed at the beginning of the whole process to outline all of our item standards. From my conversations with vendors and some peer libraries who have used these services, there's a lot of ongoing conversation for quality control. And then throughout the whole process, the vendors provide reports detailing spending and, yeah, detailing spending and the stages of each cart so that we're kept aware of the statuses of all of our items at all times. For some context, on collection size, the Southwest Branch Collection is going to be about 44,000 physical items, split up into about 33,500 print and 10,000 non-print. The Ellisville Branch Collection is currently about 62,000 items, and the Downtown Collection is about 40,000 physical items. And it's because some vendors only handle print materials and some only non-print that we plan to have two separate RFPs sent out to multiple vendors. The impact that an opening day collection service will have on ACS staff specifically is hu, or ACF's workloads is huge. In 2021, for example, our selectors, catalogers, and acquisition staff received, cataloged, and processed about 42,000 additional physical items that was in the collection. So outsourcing the work of that new collection until the delivery date is crucial. And then on the delivery day, I plan to have a team with a structure and a schedule in place for the receiving, an unboxing of items, quality control station, and then a team to shelve the items in their appropriate locations in the branch. And I recently spoke to the Director of Collection Management at the Indy Public Library and learned a ton about what to do and what to avoid on delivery day. So we feel ready and excited to get this project started, and thank you for reviewing the requests for proposals. Does anyone have any questions? Yeah.
Can you say those numbers again about how many items you'll have at each of the libraries, just because it went by me too fast?
Sure. The Southwest Branch Collection is going to be about 44,000 physical items in total, and that's split in about 33,500 print and then about 10,000 non-print. Ellisville has 62,000 roughly, and then Downtown has about 400,000 physical items.
And one more question. What are playaways?
Playaways are, they're an electronic kind of book on tape, only it's not a tape. It's like an MP3 player that you just have a battery and headphones that you plug into it, and it plays a single book.
So each, you have to have a, the device is the playaway?
Yeah, yeah. The device itself is called the playaway.
I will go look.
I think the CCS in school, I've always had them.
Oh, wow.
I should check them out for my, my students, they love them.
Kids.
Yeah. They're really popular for both our adult and juvenile patrons.
I have another question. So the material selection, are you an MCL putting the parameters for those lists that are being built?
So we're going to work with the vendors on kind of what's in our collections now, at least this is my understanding of the whole process. We're going to work with them on what is in our collection, and they're going to provide us lists of like, kind of standard-
Like a core collection?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. And I, I believe, again, from my conversations with folks, we can ask the vendors to give us like a cart that is slightly larger than the collection size we're looking for, and then we'll go through and weed out things that we know we don't want to duplicate at the Southwest Branch. And we have the freedom to add things that we know we want to add. We're trying to keep that to a minimum to, to keep the workload, you know, level for all of the selectors, but we can't do that.
I also noticed the date on here was February 2023, I think, is what it, is that true? Yeah?
Yes, I think that's the plan.
So, are you, are you only looking at prior publications? Are you continuing, will there be things that are to be published on that list?
That's a good question. This will all be things that are already published for the opening day, because then we'll have it in print and able to be put on the shelves. The selectors, I'm going to work with the selectors to start having carts at the beginning of the year, making carts to be purchasing for the Southwest Branch for future publications.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Stephanie? All right. Seeing none, all is in favor of approving the request for proposal for opening day collection for the Southwest Branch, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And next, we have Memorandum of Understanding for Continued Partnership with Health Net Clinic, and Joshua was going to give us some information about that, but before he does, do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved. Second.
Thanks for your time. This is a new partnership that we're pretty excited about with Health, the Health Net Homeless Initiative Program. They are basically an organization that has long been active in the Indianapolis area and providing critical medical services to folks who are experiencing homelessness. They are looking to expand their work and move into Monroe County. They acquired Volunteers in Medicine here in Bloomington, and they're trying to set up as a satellite program. They're, they're currently still in the Vim building over there on Second Street, but their model is to really set up satellites around the entire county, and they started talking to us about working with the library. They do, like Volunteers in Medicine, they do family practice, pediatrics, even dental care. They take regular insurance if people have it, but they basically will help anybody who can't get help. The, the critical piece that's really different and very interesting for us is that they perform social work services, which are really great. And there's, there was a little bit about it in the Director's Report. Margaret Van Sheik is the Outreach Coordinator. They are not currently doing medical work here at the library because we're still working on the Memorandum of Understanding. But Margaret already does come in on Tuesday afternoons and evenings. She distributes basic supplies, hats, coats, things like that, and does referrals for fast-track housing, other social service agencies. I think that was mentioned a little bit in the Director's Report as well. Rapid rehousing, access to insurance. They're going all over. What's, what's also really interesting about this organization that we liked is that they're really boots on the ground. They do kind of some of the Harvard-type approach that we've used here at the library, but they're going to shelters, they're, they're doing outreach even in the parks and in camps and getting to know folks, and building relationships so that when their satellites are up and running, people will be really comfortable coming here. And I think the, the incident that Elizabeth Gray referred to in the Director's Report was that someone came here and got help in housing assistance who said they wouldn't go anywhere else. They only came to the library, so we were sort of an ideal partner for them. There's been a few other really interesting kind of stories like that. We had a situation a couple of weeks ago where there was a woman here who was experiencing a mental break and behaving, you know, really struggling, and, and the situation was escalating. Elizabeth Gray called Margaret from Health Net, who happened to be heading to a park, and she got here in seven minutes, de-escalated the situation, and made a referral. So that was pretty nice. We see this partnership really as an evolution of the types of partnerships like we had with Centerstone in the past, you may recall. That partnership had to dissolve because the funding, the grant funding ran out at the time, so we've been looking for something new to kind of step into that. However, the fact that Health Net also provides medical service is relatively new territory for us, so we're taking really great care with the Memorandum of Understanding that we're working on. Tonight, I am not actually asking you to take action on the memorandum that we sent you. That memorandum, we found out from our legal team, needs some work still right away. So what I am asking you to take action on is whether you approve of this concept in general and moving forward on that. And if you do and decide to approve that, I will hopefully be back in front of you in another month or so with a revised memorandum.
I have a question.
Yes.
You did say that Health Net was leaning or providing social services, correct?
Correct.
And is there a component of that would, that would be providing, you know, I know social services encompasses a lot, but looking at, you know, the homeless population, a lot of it is their mental illness?
Mm-hmm.
And what component, part, and how strong is it with Health Net in terms of, you know, finding services and things that are needed for those people that can be diagnosed or can be helped in that way?
Yeah, I, I, I'll be honest with you, I don't know how much directly they're doing that in the way that Centerstone did with their own experts, and how much they're putting folks in touch with other people, but I, let me get back with Elizabeth and them, and when I come back next month, I'll, I'll try to get you a clear answer.
I'd be curious to know how, what, what kind of percentage of resources and services that they would have that would deal with, you know, mental health?
Okay, okay, yeah, I'll be glad to do that. And critically, I think a lot of their, their thrust and their action is, when we're trying to help people here, we make referrals and, you know, we give phone numbers and directions and things like that, and they're trying to serve as a stronger bridge in that way. But how much of it is mental health versus medical is a, is a great question. So thank you, Kathy.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
So I guess the staffing of this, so you mentioned like Volunteers in Medicine, there would be somebody then who is medically trained, like MD or physician's assistant or, right? In addition to a social worker at all times?
Yes. The, the, the folks, and if you look at the MOU, it refers to a lot of that. So obviously, the library staff can't get involved in any of that. We're not qualified. But there are a, a number of lines in there about them maintaining certifications, licenses, all of that. So, yeah, they would be here doing that for sure.
So a medical personnel type person and social worker?
Yeah. But again, I'm not, I'm not totally sure about the proportions and everything, and how many would be here when? So let me, let me say that that's, that's what they've been working on, and that's what we're getting at. But I can't be sure of that, those numbers.
Yeah, that would be.
I was just wondering, as a satellite, would the library be providing it all, like pediatrics, dentistry, mental health, if you have a cold? Or would there just be certain things the library would be having?
That's a great question, too. And let me be super clear about this. The library really is just the space provider. We provide the space, a little bit of storage for their equipment, and on occasion, as, as in the, in the example I mentioned earlier, a referral. Like, hey, I've got some, and this is how it worked with Centerstone, too. There's somebody in here you can talk to. And, but as far as the range of services go, that may fluctuate a little bit depending on what they can provide, but it's all their personnel. And those are some of the details, again, these are all super questions. How much will be mental health? How many different kinds of services? Will it fluctuate up and down? Those are, those are things we're still trying to, to really nail down.
And that would determine what kind of space they need, too, because, I mean, something between dentistry is very different than what you would need for, you know, mental health services or pediatrics or.
Correct. And, and I think one of the things they're doing, too, is just making the connections here and referring people to the Second Street location. Yeah.
The clinic would not be here?
No, no, as I understand it, it's more of a triage situation where they identify the need and refer, so it's not a.
So we're not going to hear drilling in this.
No, we're not putting a dentist chair in this room, hopefully, anytime soon.
We're treating like a little clinic, but we're not even.
Thinking like a little clinic?
No.
Probably not, no.
No, we're people. We've got people.
But, but we can provide additional details, and perhaps we can even get someone to, to come to the meeting next month.
Sure, we could invite Margaret to come here.
Because there could be things like blood pressure checks or other things like that that could happen, but not.
Not like you have an ear infection, here's your prescription. I don't know about that.
And, and even giving medical advice is something we never do. So, so if you're, if that's happening here, that's why we're being very careful with the MOU. Even if you say, you need to go talk to somebody and get this checked out, it's, it's a big deal.
So are we looking at then at possibly having a dedicated space in the library for this?
Yes.
Okay.
And in fact, right now, Margaret does, as I said, does come here on Tuesday afternoons and evenings and still meets with people and talks to them, but we're not, we're staying away from the whole medical part right now. It's really just agency referrals, fast-track housing, and coats and hats and, yeah.
Yeah. Love to know more.
Will this possibly be expand, I'm sorry, Kathy?
I was just going to say, and it is up and running in Indianapolis, you said?
It has been for some time. I'm not sure what, for how long, but I, I think they've been very active there.
I would be interested in having someone there from the librarians, the profession of the librarians in that setting, as well as the person who's operating that. I would like to hear from them.
Okay. Let me ask about that. That's another good point.
I was just curious, will it just be staying at the downtown branch, or is there the possibility that it would expand out to Ellisville and maybe the Southwest Branch in the future?
We do usually close doors on partnerships like that, so sure, a lot of it would just have to do with capacity and, and what they're capable of and what we identify going forward. So, yeah, that's another good question. Any other questions?
I think it's a very, very wonderful idea.
We're quite excited. Thanks, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we are going to have to amend the motion. So do I have a motion to approve, an amended motion to approve the concept for partnership and the creation of an updated agreement?
So.
Second.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Kind of did that backwards. Okay. All right. All in favor of approving the amended motion to, for the concept of a partnership and creation of an updated agreement with Health Net Clinic signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And our last order of new business, I have to be honest, is somewhat bittersweet. So I'm going to just go ahead and read. We have a resolution to appoint and set the salary for library director. And so before I begin, do we have a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Okay. The resolution reads, come now the library, comes now the library, the Board of Trustees of the Monroe County Public Library, having accepted the retirement of library director Marilyn Wood effective May 6, 2022. Whereas the Board of Trustees, having completed the selection process for the new library director, hereby adopts the following resolution to appoint and set the salary for the new library director, Greer Carson. Beginning on May 7, 2022, the annual salary equivalent for the library director, Greer Carson, shall be $103,200, together with all appropriate benefits consistent with the position. So in witness thereof, the Board of Trustees of the Monroe County Public Library has adopted this appointment and salary resolution for the library director this 23rd day of March 2022. So do we have any discussion or questions?
Just thank you, Marilyn, for guiding us through the, the last renovation and all the stuff that went through with the pandemic. And so with your leadership, I think we came out okay. And congratulations, Greer. We're excited to move forward with your leadership.
Very much.
So it's been wonderful. And yes, Greer, we are very excited to have you on board. And again, we will miss Marilyn very much, but hopefully we won't be seeing the last of her, that she'll still be around.
Oh, of course not.
So, well, all those in favor of accepting Marilyn's retirement and hiring Greer as our new library director signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes definitely have it. So congratulations, Greer, and.
Thank you.
And thank you, Marilyn, for all your years of service. So that brings us to the end of our items. So do we have any, anyone here for public comment?
All right.
Okay. Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. So we are adjourned.